And you.
I'm rolling.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this regular planning board meeting on June 27, 2024. Madam Secretary, can you please call?
Mr. Bernardo. Mr. Katsev.
Here.
Mr. Lilly. Mr. Heineman. Mr. Kamudi.
Here.
Mr. Diol.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan. Councilman Roman. Mayor Tamboro.
Here.
Vice Chairman Fresky.
Present.
Chairperson Pearson.
Here.
Board Attorney, Mr. Messera.
Here.
Zoning Officer, Ms. Kathleen Weish, here. Township Planner, Sanchavan, here. And Board Secretary.
And just to introduce everybody, this is our Board Secretary, Malik Metwali, right? And she goes by Mal. That's or Ms. Metwali.
Whatever you want.
Okay, what do we do now? We do the Pledge of Allegiance. Can everybody join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, in liberty and justice alone.
Chairman, I was going to say. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, could just one little thing before we get rolling. If everybody could please pay attention to their mics and when they're speaking, turn them on and when they're not, turn them off because we're getting a lot of cross conversation in the recording. Right. Can you please read the Open Public Meetings Act? Thank you.
The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied with respect to this meeting of the Verona Planning Board being held in person in the ballroom of the Verona Community Center. The time and date of this meeting were included in the annual meeting notice posted in the community center and sent to the official newspapers of the township. The Verona Cedar Grove Times and the Star Ledger at least 48 hours preceding the start time of this meeting. A public comment period will be held in the order it is listed on the meeting agenda, and instructions on how to comment will be provided at the appropriate time. All meetings are recorded. Those wishing to speak during any public comment period should only provide their name and municipality. Street and addresses are not required. Please be advised that should a member of the public choose to state their street address, it will not be rejected from this record.
Great. And so with that, anyone wishing to speak on any subject, please approach the mic. And you have, what is it, three minutes? Four minutes. Four minutes.
So no questions?
No questions. Now, this is.
Okay, I'm actually looking for guidance.
You need to state your name?
I'm Niti Verona. I've been trying to determine what the tax implication of the affordable housing developments in the town, including Verona flats. I've looked at documents online. I've talked to the Board of Education in particular. I'm interested in what will be effect of students, the number of students coming in, and I've been unable to get information. I am hoping this board can guide me or give me a specific person that I can speak to as to what the tax implications will be for the town.
Sure. So I would get in touch with George Labrouzy. He is our tax assessor. Okay. Yeah. He is our tax assessor.
Okay. And if I fail to get a response from him.
You can call, contact Pam Prisco because she works in, she runs the office in Verona.
Right.
And she's very responsive.
Right.
You will not not get a response from her. As well, those buildings at this point are not rented, nor do we know the, you know, how and who is going to be renting them. And so it's impossible to tell you exactly what the ramifications of the one, two, and three-bedroom units and how many children and the effect on the schools because it's cart before horse right now. It's, they're not rented. There are guestimates and.
And that's what I'm interested in.
I would definitely, well, first for the tax ramification, please, Mayor.
Hi. I can actually refer you to the public presentation that we did at the council meeting on this that actually will answer most of your questions.
Okay.
As far as, we don't really have it, we have kind of basic estimates on how many people would be there, but if you give me a minute, I can figure out what meeting I was at. And the presentation came from the developer.
I believe I read that with the, and the Board of Education did a statistical study on it, which I questioned validity of it, but from that, it can be estimated that the. There was a line.
Yeah, there was, there was a.
But there should be, okay, it's gonna, there's gonna be 100 students, there's gonna be 200 students, and the tax implication is X. That's what I'm looking for.
There's, there's no way to know just now how many students there will be because the.
Right.
The lottery process is just starting and the placements will be happening in September. As far as the, the tax implication piece, I, your best bet on any of that equipment or any of that information is to reach out to our township manager.
So I would assume that when this project went forward, they did some guestimates that if 200 students are there, it'll be XYZ. There's $20,000 student in Verona, so we should be able to extrapolate that. That's what I'm looking for.
Correct. So Mr. Diarco, the town manager, I put his email on that card for you and you can copy me on it. He has a lot of the information.
Right.
The actual per pupil expenditure is, it's not, when you add students to a school district, each student you add doesn't necessarily increase the cost of school district by $16,000, whatever the cost per pupil is. The, it, it adds expenses if you have to add another teacher or something like that, right? But just adding one more child, there's, it's, doesn't significantly increase the expense, but it's really, it's a question of space and, and making space and renovations, and it's questions of staffing. Those are the two major cost drivers. I also had some problems with the, the study that was done. There's, there's some questions that I didn't think were answered and assumptions made that I wouldn't have made. But Mr. Diarco has been fielding these questions, and if he doesn't have the information, he'll be able to get you the right information.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, we couldn't answer everything. Are there any other public comments? Okay, then I will, sorry.
I will close public participation and we will move on to approval of meeting minutes. We have two sets of meeting minutes from February 22, 2024, and meeting minutes from March 28, 2024. Does anybody have any comments or corrections or corrective statements or ministerial corrections on any of these? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve, can we do both?
Sure.
To approve both sets of meeting minutes unless somebody needs to abstain from one or the other. From which one?
The February.
Okay, can you mark Vice Chair Fresky as abstaining from the February meeting minutes? Anybody else have any abstentions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to, actually, we need to bifurcate them, to approve February meeting minutes.
Make the motion to approve.
Mr. Katsev makes the motion. I'll second. I'll second. Vote to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Any not to approve and one abstention. And another motion I will entertain for the minutes on March 28. Motion? I'll motion it. Mr. Kamudi makes the motion.
Second.
Mayor Tamboro seconds. All vote to approve?
Aye.
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 Any not to approve and no abstentions. Okay, both sets of meeting minutes pass. And we are now moving on to new business, and I will happily hand the meeting over to Ms. Sanchavan, who is our township planner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great, do you need to swear me in?
Well, we can't, Senator. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you were about to give is the truth?
I absolutely do.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So nice to see everyone after two months. So I'm, I have before you the 320 Bloomfield Avenue and 11 Church Street area in need of redevelopment investigation study. So any area in need of redevelopment, acronym is AINR, as you'll see in future, it's governed by New Jersey's Local Redevelopment and Housing Law, and you'll see the acronym LRHL as I proceed through the testimony. Why redevelopment? Redevelopment is a tool that is handed to municipalities to stimulate change, have economic development. It's a very proactive process and enables a municipality to develop a vision. Once an area gets designated as an area in need of redevelopment, it gives a municipality the authority to prepare a redevelopment plan, which allows for more flexibility. Municipality has better control of development outcomes, and the LRHL statutes also enables a municipality to offer incentives such as long-term tax exemptions, and it's again at the discretion of the governing body. It also enables a municipality to negotiate development priorities, construction phasing, improvements, dedications, and this is again generic information. Just to refresh, you guys have had redevelopment studies done in the past.
Madam Secretary, can you just please mark the record that Councilman Roman has arrived? Thank you. Thank you.
So as per the redevelopment statutes or LRHL, the governing body has to first authorize the study and it has to, this study has to specify whether it would be a condemnation or a non-condemnation, and the resolution passed by the governing body has very clearly noted that any designation would be non-condemnation redevelopment area. What that really means is there's no eminent domain, no involuntary takings, any interested developers would need to negotiate with property owners. That's how this works. So again, I, I know you all have reviewed redevelopment investigations in the past, but I just want to refresh everyone's memory with the LRHL redevelopment process. So the first step is the township council authorizes planning board by resolution to conduct the AI INR study, which is what it is, what, what we are meeting up today. The second step is the planning board or the consultant, which conducts the study to determine if the area meets the statutory criteria, which is the H2M report that you all have. And at a duly noticed planning board public hearing, the study findings are presented. Planning board makes recommendations to the governing body or council to designate or not the study area, which is the current step we are in. This designation is very technical in terms of what the statutes require us to do, and then the next step after that would be the governing body either accepts or rejects the planning board's recommendation, is again at their discretion. If they accept, then they by resolution designate an area in need of redevelopment or what we call redevelopment areas. So redevelopment is a three-step process. Again, phase one, we are at phase one, which is meeting, conducting, to see AI INR study to see if the area meets the statutory criteria. Then the next step would be preparation of a redevelopment plan, which basically is not what we are concerned with at this point, but the redevelopment plan is by statutes, not a master plan that you guys adopted two years ago, but it's more like a ordinance or this called plan. So it's, it's prepared and adopted like any other ordinance. Your role is advisory in that case. You would determine if it met the master plan consistency, et cetera, et cetera. Then once the redevelopment plan gets prepared and adopted, the third step is that the governing body either selects a redeapper or works with existing property owners, and then they would then prepare a site plan, which would again come before you, the planning board, as you review any development application. Then the governing body also has the power to negotiate the redevelopment agreement and implement the plan. So the study area in question are two properties along Bloomfield and Church, as you can see. And if you recall, I think a few months ago, I'd presented the rehabilitation investigation. One of the lots, 320 Bloomfield, is within the rehab area. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the land uses, everyone's familiar with it. It's in a mixed-use neighborhood. This is, the two lots have residential commercial uses. There's a multifamily across the street on Bloomfield, Henry's is to the east. The church is to the north of the property, Verona First State is opposite. Church Street, there's a commercial building at the corner of Church and Bloomfield, and then the vacant parking lot where you have the parking for Verona's First State as well as Henry's. Now redevelopment criteria, I, I've simplified it, but I can go into it just to provide a framework as to the next step when I present why it's my professional opinion that, that these two properties meet the redevelopment criteria. So this criteria is section five of the LRHL, and first criteria is buildings, substandard buildings. So what that really means is buildings that have deteriorated or fallen into a state of disrepair that people cannot inhabit them. The second criteria again is specifically for buildings where it's vacant or abandoned commercial and industrial buildings or conditions in, in those that have fallen into state of deterioration and disrepair, so boarded-up buildings and et cetera, et cetera. Third criteria, which is criteria C, is land owned by public agencies or vacant public land that has remained fallow for more than 10 years. So that's, that's criteria C. Criteria D is dilapidated areas, diligious land use. So this, unlike A and B, doesn't look at just buildings, but it looks at buildings and the sites surrounding it and the improvements that are dilapidated, they're obsolete, not as per modern engineering standards, they're overcrowded, faulty design, et cetera, et cetera. And then E is basically a growing lack or total lack of proper utilization of areas because of title issues, vacant commercial or office spaces, et cetera, which basically conditions that impede land assemblage or discourage the undertaking of improvement. So that's criteria E. Criteria F is land more than five acres that has had natural hazards like buildings burned down by fire or hit by cyclone, et cetera, et cetera. Now G, enterprise zones that have designated, like for example, our cities, which are a part of UEZ zone, like Newark, Patterson, et cetera, et cetera, that's, that's, that's the criteria. And then finally, they call it the smart growth criteria, which by itself doesn't have any standing, but the LRHL has that where the designation of the area is consistent with smart growth principles. So if you recall, we have state plan and they have planning areas A and planning area B, so it's for those areas. So these are, these are the eight criteria, and I'm going to get into the details. So for any redevelopment study, it's always nice to look at the background. So we studied the master plan policy. We were in the, we prepared the master plan not too long ago. So I'm just summarizing, page 17 has everything in detail, but I'm just summarizing what just the overall goals were, and basically it talked about promoting growth in appropriate areas, continue to ensure Bloomfield Avenue is a vibrant and attractive downtown, maintain attractive and thriving business in commercial districts, and so those are the few, a few goals and objectives which are relevant to this study. So we analyzed just, again, there was a whole section on the study area, the context and analysis, but I would just say that portion of the area, as I mentioned, is already designated as an area in need of rehab. It's located on the main Bloomfield Avenue corridor. The area is well serviced by public transportation, New Jersey bus routes, and redevelopment designation is aligned with township's planning goals. Public transportation, as you know, we had delved into detail at the master planning level, but there are two bus routes, New Jersey Transit Route 29, which has stops along Bloomfield, which is the one in blue, and not like a 10, 15-minute walk from that near Clermont is, is New Jersey Transit 11 bus stop. So it's well connected by public transit. We looked at the individual property analysis. So when I explain to you the criteria from A to H, which I apologize, it's very boring, but it's just forms of foundation, that everything is so technically required by the statutes that we have to request records to see what would be relevant, if at all anything is relevant. So we looked at the tax maps, we looked at the assessor records, we looked at accident reports, fire department code violations, inspection reports, any development applications. So we requested all of that building department permits. We went on DP website to identify there any contamination issues, and obviously we looked at the master plan zoning map and ordinance. And most importantly, for any redevelopment study, you also conduct a field visit, and we spent a few hours, two, three hours in April to actually conduct a field visit, and that's where we got all these photographs from. As you know, these are the two properties, and I'm putting it all together because it is a redevelopment area. And the first property, which is 320 Bloomfield, it contains a main structure, which is the commercial structure, it's like a brick structure with that peach thing to the back, and Bloomfield Avenue, really, the topography from the rear of the property to Bloomfield is a steep slope. So what's really their subgrade becomes a full floor, the brick portion on Bloomfield, which is basically occupied by, I think it's an interior design business, and the, it's connected to a two-story building, so the peach portion is their office, and behind is a, is a residential unit. And then it's not clear here, but I think in, there are other pictures, but the right is an accessory structure, which has a business use, which is a massage therapy business, and access to the site is provided from Bloomfield, which, you know, which is pretty wide, 24 feet or 22 feet as you enter, but it narrows to really nine feet. And there's a rear parking lot with a three-car garage, which is all the way to the rear, which is shared with 11 Church Street, which is the next site, and that contains Verona Aluminum, a one-story commercial building, and there's also a single-family residential home and a small undefined parking area to the front of Verona Aluminum. And the driveway, which leads to the rear parking lot, which is shared with 320, is approximately 13 feet, and the width is too narrow to serve as a two-way driveway. Now, I, based on the analysis, and I will share the photographs and really comments on that, is it meets criterion D, and as I mentioned earlier, criterion D focuses on both the buildings as well as other site improvements and addresses how the site functions in terms of the layout and overall design. And in general, properties that meet this criterion are being used in a manner not consistent with modern land use planning standards and practices. So the next slide actually provides an explanation and photographic evidence, and although this definition may seem too broad, a combination of one or more sections, which are noted with, within section five of the redevelopment statutes or LRHL, indicates the obsolescence of design and layout. So I'm going to start with the exterior photographs, and I've included a lot of pictures in, in the report, but I, I have included a few to just highlight what I'm trying to explain. So the first thing is, to the left is view of the driveway, and as you can see in the above image, so the first and second image, the driveway narrows at a point between the residential unit and the one-story accessory structure. The second image actually, to the top, the middle image, actually looks at Bloomfield from the back of the property, and as you can see here, it has gravel and asphalt, it's, you know, badly maintained, undefined parking. So the, then the third, this picture to the bottom middle is basically the view of the rear yard looking towards the West Early side of the property and Bloomfield Avenue to the south, and there's a retaining wall, which belongs to the adjacent parking lot, but the existing fencing and just the walkway shows signs of disrepair. The other picture to the extreme left bottom, extreme right, I'm sorry, shows, you know, the pipes are all exposed, stormwater, there's no stormwater management, everything flows on to the site and into the neighboring yard. And, you know, the picture to bottom left, actually, the picture there is the West Early facade, and it's seen from the parking lot at the corner of Bloomfield and Church, and you know, we, I have one picture to, to the top right and the one to the bottom left, which basically shows signs of deterioration. So, you know, actually onsite, it showed visible rust, cracks, peeling paint. So we didn't have access to all, all, all the buildings, but we did access the residential unit, and I have three pictures here, but there are far more in the report. And this shows the view of the hallway, and as I mentioned, the slide, side slopes downwards towards Bloomfield. So portion of this property, as you can see from the right image, is subgrade, and you know, it had just rained the prior day, and there's still water retention on the site, and we could see that there was some water damage also. There's lack of insulation, the windowsill, the windows are not as per current standards. When you look at the roof, it shows like missing tiles, it's broken, pipes are exposed. So even the actual building exterior, there were areas where the roof tiles were missing, which is actually noted in the report. Similarly, when we took a look at 11 Church Street, again, there's undefined parking to the front, which really extends all the way to, to the building and the property line. It's not in compliance with current engineering standards. The residential unit along Church Street, it's an old unit. Parking, view of the parking lot, again, shows signs of deterioration, and the driveway, we kind of approximately measured, it's, it's a two-way driveway, it's 13 feet, this is a .16, you know, like 7,500 square foot lot, doesn't comply with ETC zone standards. And then as you go down, oops, sorry, as you look at the image to the left, it's, it's completely covered, and you know, if you look at the bottom middle image, you can see. that the exposed pipes are actually supported by metal planks. And then there's this vinyl fence, and we peered through that, and the last picture to the bottom right shows basically just a lot of garbage and things just thrown in there. So there's a one-car garage, the bottom left picture, which is for the house, but it's really, half of that property is 320, so they don't, 320 Bloomfield, so they don't have adequate yard. Then we, of course, had access to only one building, which was Verona Aluminum. And the first picture, top left, it's the view of the entrance looking to a church street from the interior, and it's a narrow island, you know, it's not AD compliant, not compliant in terms of fireproof. And it's, it was lined by piles of furniture and other scrap. If you look at the middle picture, it was basically, it's, there've been roof leakage issues, so the floor is unfinished, pockets are placed to collect, collect water from the leaking roof. And then the other, the bottom left and the top right pictures basically show piles of scrap and furniture that were stacked up to the ceiling. So it just blocks the room and immediately adjacent to the workshop entrance. So the last picture to the right, bottom right, is you can see exposed wiring, makeshift repairs to the ceiling. So these were the conditions, and I have more explanation and details in the report. So finally, when, you know, upon review of the existing conditions on the site as depicted in these photographs, help support the determination that the study area is eligible to satisfy the D criterion due to the obsolescence in design of not just the buildings, but site design, as exposed pipes, so there's absolutely no stormwater management, completely covered by impervious surface coverage, don't meet the current zoning standards for ETC Zone, although mixed uses permitted, this site has residential on the ground floor all the way to the back. So it's basically not meeting even the letter of law and intent of why the ETC Zone was. So as, again, as I mentioned earlier, this criterion focuses on both the buildings, as well as site improvements, and, and addresses how the site functions in terms of layout and overall design. And conditions that lead to this conclusion basically are, as per the statutes, obviously, undefined or poorly defined parking area, limited vehicular access available, onsite loading areas, inadequate onsite parking, or inadequate buffer screening. And so, so those are typical, typical standards that one looks at. And most importantly, greater the number of these conditions, and consequently, more significant the problems created, the stronger is the finding that the study area meets the criterion. So again, to sum it up, the site and the existing buildings have ongoing maintenance issues in terms of roof leakage, inefficient heating and air conditioning systems, lack or complete absence of stormwater management system, the parking layout is obsolete, it's, and, and overall the site layout. So it's not in accordance with the current engineering standards, which makes it exhibit conditions of obsolescence and faulty arrangement or design as per the LRHL, and thus satisfies the D criterion. And I think redevelopment of this area is necessary and essential to correct any concerns and the overarching goal that the township has of revitalizing Bloomfield area corridor. Now, I had also mentioned about criteria H. So it's important to reiterate, reiterate that the study area is located in the PA-1 Metropolitan Planning Area, where the state plan's intention is to provide for much of the state's future redevelopment revitalization, promote growth in compact farms, stabilize older suburbs, redesign areas of sprawl, and protect the character of existing stable communities. So the study area is located in, in this, in the PA-1 area, it's, it's the state's preferred vehicle for redevelopment in order to, again, like I said, accommodate growth, what they call smart, smart growth. So it also satisfies criterion H, as it has all these attributes I just mentioned. So the next step, so, okay, so to summarize, the boring criteria that I went through is essential because that provides the evidence for me as a professional planner to make a testimony that I recommend designating these two properties as non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. And I'm at the end of my presentation. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and I'm happy to take questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Sam. That was a really complete and comprehensive report. So I'm sure I'm not the only one who feels like there was a lot of work that went in, and you really nailed it. I want, I would like to open it up to board members to ask any questions that they may have.
Sure. Thank you for putting it together. It was comprehensive. I read through it a couple of times. I've got about four or five questions, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
So the standards that you used, you called it out, they're pretty broad, they're kind of the broadest standards.
Correct.
Within that. And so coupled with the fact that the two lots, some to about a half an acre in size, I'm a little concerned about using this as a workaround for spot zoning. So did you take any of that into consideration, or, you know, can maybe Mr. Rosario comment on the issues that this could bring up with something like that?
So I'm glad you asked me this question, because I've always had people ask me this question. I had a presentation on Monday night for one of my other clients to the Township Council, and they said, would this be spot zoning? Absolutely not. Redevelopment, as per the statutes, enables a municipality to identify areas that very successfully satisfy the criteria to designate them as an area in need of redevelopment. Now, any redevelopment plan, should you, should, should we choose to prepare in future, is required by the statutes to take into consideration what's, what's the context. So to answer your question, would this be considered spot zoning? No, it's not. It's been held in court to not, and we are meeting very specific criteria.
Okay, thanks. And so my next question, actually, I think, is Greg, this one probably is fit for you. So again, the standards here, in my opinion, are kind of broad. So what are their implications if we were to do this for other property owners in the town center, extended town center? I'm specifically thinking about, and I want to be careful because we're still in negotiations with the one I'm thinking about, with, with the applicant, another property owner that is currently looking at redeveloping a property. Can they then see if this is approved to go and then use that as a mechanism to get another project approved?
No, absolutely not. These are, I mean, sorry, Greg. Sorry.
No, go, go. I mean, every, every application stands on its own.
Okay.
And every property stands on its own.
On its own, yeah.
You know, unfortunately, when you have a situation where a community like Verona, just like many communities up and down Bloomfield Avenue, it's, it's not that difficult to meet some of these criteria, but, but the short answer is every, every property, every property stands on its own.
And, and just to assarge any concerns you may have, Jeremy, the reason why this review is so thorough is because I do not want that to happen, where it's so, pardon, informality, but so loosey-goosey, that someone says, oh, you designated 320, why not us? That is why there were so much of effort and so many pictures taken and very specific language. So I, we don't want that.
Okay. So my next question is probably more for our council members. So again, another concern I have about this is it seemingly might be a little bit premature, given the fact that we did the master plan, and we do want to do smart goals and smart growth. But the council has not yet started the strategy definition implementation around updating the zoning in the town center, extended town center. So can you maybe take a minute and give us an update as to where you are in that process?
I think those two things are quite separate. The planning board at this point is reviewing this application, or this request for the area in need of redevelopment, and the council sent it to the planning board because we want the planning board's review. So clearly, the council's intention is to do something with this at this point. So that's all I think is necessary really to comment on that.
I mean, I don't. I'd also add that at the last council meeting, one council member actually wanted to put the brakes on rezoning, on redoing the zoning code. So I, where is it? I don't know, we can ask Sam, where is it?
So from my end, the TC Zone has been prepared. It's in a draft format. It's not that I've stopped doing any work, and I just want to make it very clear that I've been working very diligently, and I presented a month ago the C2 zoning, which was very essential because there are properties that need to basically come back onto the tax rolls. So my, my end, there is, there are no brakes from my end, unless the governing body tells me stop working, then I'll put my pencil down. But right now, this was a priority because it's, and just so that everybody on the board understands, that I don't do any work, you know, it's not, I don't have blinders on, I always look at it holistically. That's, that's my role as a planner. So please be, please be assaged of any concerns that it's not going to be some haphazard development, and there's a lot of thought that I had put in.
My concern isn't that it's a haphazard development, it's more that we take a holistic look at this.
It is.
Because it's my understanding, and I rewatched the two council meetings from last August, September, that the property owner came to the council specifically to ask for this, specifically because he wanted a pilot. So I'm just looking for clarity on whether the council would have even considered this outside of this owner's request, because they're supposed to show hardship, which again, according to the, what I've reviewed from the council, hasn't been presented yet. And it seems just a unique approach that someone approached the council and said, hey, please do this because I want a pilot.
Well, I can tell you, I don't know anything about the pilot, but the, the property owner did approach the, the town to do it.
Right.
That I know. Other than that, I'm not sure, you know, I don't know any of the details or reasons or whatever, but.
I mean, I watched the presentation, he specifically said it in his presentation that he wanted a pilot.
Okay.
I will add that almost every single pilot or area in need of redevelopment started by going to the Verona Town Council and asking for it. And then it went through the process. Maybe it didn't always happen by coming forth publicly at a meeting, maybe it happened in a private meeting between the manager and this one and that one, and the zoning code department and whatever. But that's the only way that they can happen. A property owner has to approach the town council and ask for this.
No, that's.
Why, why can't it be a part of a holistic?
That's what's happened every time in Verona.
I'm not sure about that, but that's not how it has to happen. I don't, I can't.
That's not how it has to happen.
How it hasn't happened.
But it can, I mean.
Where hasn't it?
The governing body, for instance, the area in need of rehabilitation, the governing body, which is different than an area in need of redevelopment, the governing body asked the board to make that determination. The governing body certainly can ask the board to, you know, look at a certain section of, say, Grove Avenue and, and make the determination. It, it can happen either way.
I mean, Verona, I, I'm just going to say, Anan, Verona Place, keep going, they all went, in fact, Verona Place went through a board meeting or two, and then they were like, you know what, this isn't going to work for me financially. And then they went to the council, and then they started their board meeting hearings again. And, and the same with the Anan flag.
But that's fine. Where I've been trying to go with this, though, is we did the master plan, we want to set out strategic goals, I feel like we're not taking a holistic look at this.
And what is, what do you think, I, I'm not arguing whether I agree or disagree with you, but what about this do you find is not meeting any of the goals of the master plan?
Just. It's not just the goal, the standard applied is very broad. I, there's a host of properties along Bloomfield that you can apply this standard to.
It's unfortunate, because they basically made it so your backyard would fit this.
But that's what I'm so trying to have a stick a holistic.
Well, let me say this. The way to protect your, the goals would be the creation of the overlay zone, right? Just because it's an area in need of redevelopment does not mean that now there can be a six-story building. There has to be a, a zone created, a redevelopment agreement and a redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan will set forth specifically what is allowed.
Right. And this property owner has stated he wanted a three-story building.
He wanted what?
A three-story building.
Well, that's, that's not up to the property.
I understand that, but that was what was expressed. So again, I'm trying to think about this holistically and strategically, rather than just applying it once and being done with it.
Madam Chairwoman, could I?
Yes.
Jump in.
Go ahead.
I think it's important to note that the planning board's responsibility at this time is to review, determine whether this should be an area of need of redevelopment based on this report. This is now the second time Mr. Katsev has brought up the town council in discussions and trying to question finances and things like that, that is way outside the purview of the planning board.
Well, Mayor, I, in defense of the board member, and you are a board member, it's been the practice of this board for the 23 years that I've been the attorney for the board, that the board takes a legitimate interest in all issues, tangential or direct. And the board sometimes gets off on tangents, but there's always been a lot of latitude in what is discussed. I think it's important, the questions that are asked, so that anybody in the public might become informed, whether it be on, you know, tape or TV or whatever, might be informed about the process, how is development and the master plan promoted, like we just talked about with, you know, the, the redevelopment plan. You know, the, this board is, has been and always is an open board, and I would really, it would, I would not counsel the board to keep topics closed. I'm in favor of, and I think it's my responsibility to tell the board that, you know, you can talk about whatever you want.
I, I agree with Mr. Rosario's, the way that he's described this board, we've always been able to discuss whatever. However, what you're, you're kind of arguing, sorry, you're kind of arguing against a practice in municipal land use law that.
I'm not arguing against, and I'd also like to respond directly to Tamara, this is the second time I've received a sanctimonious lecture on this. The Constitution protects my right to come here and speak openly on this. I'm not in your classroom, okay? Please treat me with respect, just as I've been treating everybody else. I'm asking the questions politely and openly, and I'm not retorting that way.
Mr. Katsev, if you attended one of my classes, you would know that the First Amendment is not the situation when you're here. As a member of the board, the First Amendment doesn't protect you necessarily as a board member. If you want to comment publicly, then that's different. But this isn't a First Amendment issue. My point, Mr. Katsev, is that we seem to be taking the board down rabbit holes that really don't apply. We have a very simple job right now, and the simple job is to review this thorough report, to determine whether the thorough report allows for this to be.
I have, and I'm asking those questions, and I apologize if you don't like those questions. I am allowed to ask those questions.
You could, you can ask whatever question you want, but at the same point, I think you need to understand your role as a member of this board.
Thanks.
Yeah. Mr. Katsev's line of questions, I think, are very legitimate and reasonable, and it promotes the right discussion. So I'm in support. So I'm in support of Mr. Katsov being able to pursue these questions.
I think it's our vote that is bound by the laws, not the discussion.
Right. I, I'm sorry, I think I just blanked everybody. I think I just cut everyone's mic. I'm just getting ready for later.
She's been dying for that.
Getting ready. I absolutely agree. We've always had open discussions here, even if sometimes we, every single one of us have been guilty of going off topic and, you know, kind of don't. Tim, you are absolutely not one that's ever done that. Whatever the case, you are not go, I'm over here. I don't know if you're looking at me. You're not being, you know, tied and told that you can't ask questions. The, the bottom line, I'm sorry?
Apparently I am.
No, no, you're not.
I'm answering the fact that I should-
Look, can we just take this down a notch, please? I'm asking you. Thank you. Let's just, I think we need to move forward. Right now, we do have a job. I understand your concern with creating a property that would potentially set a precedent, like the two across the street from it, that already set that precedent in 2014, and then again in 2017 with Anan. And, well, but-
There's no precedent, there's no precedent-
I understand that, but, but that's what he's basically saying, that then somebody can come and say, they did it, why can't I?
Let me say this, because Jeremy, I think you'd be interested in the very beginning of this, the chairwoman said to me, who's gonna write the redevelopment plan? Okay? And in the past, the planning board has written the redevelopment plans. The planning board wrote the, the Anan redevelopment plan. The planning board wrote the Verona Place redevelopment plan. I don't think the planning board will be writing this redevelopment plan because the, the planning board's role has kind of been diminished in the last few years. But that's something that the chairwoman asked, that if in our recommendation, we could request that to let the planning board write it, because that's really what the planning board does. But that's for the council to determine, but it was even, you know, Jess had asked me if, if we could put that in the recommendation.
I'm looking to protect us too.
Right. Because that would be, you know-
That's fine. I mean, I'm done with my line of questioning, so we can move on. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
I'm done with my line of questions now.
You are?
I mean, I do have more, but I don't want to hear about it. So I'm gonna pass and pass it to the-
Jeremy, let's just move forward.
I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
Councilman Roman has his hand up, but I'm, I'm gonna park that statement there. He's got his hand up.
Okay.
Oh, all right, it's mine?
Can you turn it off, please?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I just wanted to offer sort of a separate response, and, you know, speaking for myself here. When we look at these proposals for areas in need of redevelopment, you know, if it was a town, the township would look at this if it was much, much larger, like if we had brownfields, or if we had a substantial amount of underutilized industrial space or something would be where you might have the town council starting to try and develop redevelopment plans. When I look at these, when these proposals are brought forward to the council by the developers, I look at the properties themselves and try to determine, first off, are they substandard or underutilized in their current condition, meeting one of these criteria? And if so, is it likely to be economically and practically redevelopable without the presence of an area in need of redevelopment? And then when we do look at an area in need of redevelopment, rather than worrying so much about, you know, pilots and things like that are things we talk about much, much later. They're not, you know, for our discussion of land use, they're part of the early, they're not part of the early discussions. And I, I look at the context of the land use. This is one of those things where you kind of have to, have to trust a little bit. The reason why there's two council members on this board is so that there can be a flow back and forth between the board and the township council. And I always try and express the intent of the planning board when we discuss these things at the council. I try and say, here's what the planning board thought about this as we were going through the master plan discussions, here's where we're coming from and why we should do this. And we try and scale these developments appropriately for the downtown. We're intending to try and have the township's best interests at heart in these things. So my questions to the planner are generally what other sorts of things might happen on this parcel absentee area in need of redevelopment? Are there other possibilities for it? Or is it essentially such an awkward piece of land that what's there is likely to stay? And that's really the question, is, is there an opportunity here to put some land into more productive use here in the township without, you know, again, putting a six-story building on it? And on the concept of creating precedent, Mr. Masara has advised us over and over and over and over that we do not create precedent when we make these decisions. Even if somebody wants to argue that, it still does not actually create a precedent that has to be followed. Each one of these proposals is evaluated on its own individual merits and, and whether or not it represents good land use planning. So just my thoughts on the matter.
I understand all of that, and I appreciate that. That was like a relevant response, and I didn't even get to the whole, what are the alternatives yet. But again, yes, we have to do it on its individual merits. I totally understand that.
Jeremy?
We also have a master plan, and I just wanted to ask questions around that to help me inform my decision on the application.
May I interject? I, I, I will say this. Don't just keep talking over other people because you're upset. And I get it. I was gonna add an example-
Sorry?
-of the, the precedent that doesn't exist, just to allay your worry about that. But I'm not going to now, because I feel cut off by you the way you felt cut off by another. Please, Sam, we're gonna have to move forward because this is just not going very well. Doc, would you like to ask a question?
No, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, great.
I've been in town over 50 years, former customer of Verona Aluminum. And I'll tell you, when I see this presentation, there's no question in my mind that this is an area in need of redevelopment. I was there when Verona Aluminum was a thriving business before it went out. And to see these pictures, it, it's, it sort of breaks my heart that the business isn't there anymore. And there's no question that it is an area in need of redevelopment.
Thank you, Doc.
Sean, a couple of questions on why not A versus D? I know the language is very similar.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do A because, again, the, why not A against D? I, I didn't want to do A because I did not go into the interiors of each and every building. And D is, D, you know, when I say that it's general, this is, at no point am I saying that my report is general. My report is very specific as to why it meets the criteria. And then secondly, as a planner who actually worked on your master plan, and it's not relevant to what we're doing, but I just want to ma, I just, because we are having an open discussion, I just want to let everybody know that ever since I got appointed as your planner, I do have developers who would reach out saying, hey, can we do this, that, and the other? And at no point, having worked on your master plan, am I going to recommend something that would change the character. But at the same time, I want everyone to also understand that when we want to revitalize the Bloomfield Avenue corridor, redevelopment happens when existing zoning doesn't give the most optimal results. I'm not talking about Verona specifically, I'm talking about redevelopment in general. So please understand that when this was written, I didn't go into this project trying to say, hey, will this satisfy the criteria as much as, let's take a look at it holistically to see whether it satisfies the criteria and have enough evidence to document that, so that there is no room left for ambiguity. So.
Okay, great. On that, on that note, and very thorough, and just for the record, you know, I'm inclined to agree with your, your assessment here, but I do want to know, you know, what crosses the threshold into D because, well, if you came to my house unannounced, you might think it's an area of need.
No, I know.
But, you know, I spruce it up a little bit.
No, I, well-
A little worried.
No.
You know, there's different stuff lying around and broken.
I have to tell you, I had the same question asked on Monday night by one of the governing body members, saying, what if you say, if you come and say my home meets the criteria? I said, no, that's not how it, that's not how it works. You know, do, do you have structural issues? Are you, are your, are your building, your roof falling down?
Is, well, is, is patching a roof, is patching a roof with tar? Is that okay?
So we look at the property, we, that's something, and, and, you know, again, I'm not trying to make fun of you, Tim.
No, I know, I brought that in. Seriously.
But these are, a lot of-
What makes this broken?
Right. A lot of people, laypeople would think that, but that's not how it, it works. When, you know, when there is no stormwater management on a site that's fully impervious, when, when you're, when the building is deteriorating, when you're not, there, nobody wants to go the, the redevelopment route, right? When your existing zoning fails for certain properties, this is why the state of New Jersey has these separate regulations in place, and this is why we have the LRA chair.
Great.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, that does.
I hope I was not-
I put myself out there, but I'm seriously, that this, and, and it's the combination of all of them, because I see it too. You know, and then this goes to Mr. Katsev's, I think, you know, pointing out the strategic things in our master plan is, so I see this, you know, I, I could see why the owner, by the way, Verona Aluminum's out of business?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So why they would come and present this, but like, if I look at this strategically, you know, there's that parking lot, I guess it's for Henry's or whatever, like, like, if we were doing this, I'd make that whole square, not this L, an area of need of redevelopment, I would include Lot 19.
Right. I, I can't do that unless the governing body says, examine that.
Because, because that is strategic, and that is covered, like, now we're gonna get an L-shaped year building because someone's gonna combine the lots after we do this because that's how the game is played.
We don't know that yet.
Yeah, but we know what-
And again, what I'm saying too, that even-
I bet good money.
Even with the parking lot, that, I, that was not what I was tasked with. I was tasked with this.
Of course, of course.
Now, please note that it, that parking lot is under, it's in an area in need of rehabilitation. Should the governing body decide at a later date, do something about it, it's different. But please note that you can't stop that L shape just because you think this, that goes back to the point, you know, Greg made, that if you go down Bloomfield Avenue corridor to other towns too, there'll be plenty of properties that might meet the criteria. But that's, that directive has to come to me from the governing-
No, 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 fair enough. And, but I think this is, you know, where I will say, the recommendations for the redevelopment plan, I haven't been through this before.
But the building owner has to walk back. The property owner, it's two separate properties.
Right.
And the property owner of one already rebuilt their thing.
Are they two separate owners?
Henry's, you know-
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, this is, right, this puts-
So Henry's already did, picked up job on their building and they added that-
But I mean, there's that lot there, I don't know who owns the lot, there's the empty lot. But, you know, the, the thing is, and I think this goes to, we should be very assertive and opinionated on our recommendations to the governing body, because the last time with Sunset, I was underwhelmed with the, the redevelopment plan that came out of that. When we were asked to revisit it, we saw it, and, and we were told, look, the town gets great leverage in this, and I honestly, I think, could have been levered a lot better. So, you know, I, I'm gonna hold off on recommendations, I think, except like, you know, working out some deal, we have that combined parking, whatever, you know, part of our master plan about shared parking. That Lot 19 might be significant considerations. I've got others, but my questions are over. Thank you.
I have my own question, Mayor too.
Since I alluded to the question, this is for Sam. If this were not declared an area in need of redevelopment, what is most likely to happen with the parcels, in your opinion? And what are the other potentials for the parcels under underlying zoning?
So the, if it were not declared as an area in need of redevelopment, right? It would continue to remain the way it is because, you know, some, when you zone parcels in a particular way, if conventional zoning would be, would be applicable or feasible, properties don't go through the redevelopment route. So, you know, what could go? Did I analyze it? I analyzed, you know, like, for example, 11 Church Street, it's 77,700 square foot lot, right? It doesn't meet the ETC zone criteria. There are, the way the site sits too is, it, it may not meet, it may not meet all of the ET zone requirements. So, you know, if conventional zoning were feasible, like going back to what Henry's did to improve their property, I don't think they would have, anybody would want to go through the redevelopment route. It's a, it's a time-consuming process because, one, you go through the redevelopment, you have a redevelopment plan which is an ordinance, okay? Then you come back before the planning board for a full site plan review. If conventional zoning worked, why would they want to do that added, you know, time and expense and what have you? So, so I hope that answer, I, I hope that's clear.
Right. It, it kind of sounds like a lot of this has to do with lot sizes and configurations of lots.
Many, correct. Underutilization.
And sort of unless there was someone who was able to create a larger assemblage of land and try and merge lots and do a larger project, it would be unlikely that this would be rebuilt to more current standard buildings, given the, the lot sizes and shapes.
Yeah, I mean, this size, with both the lots consolidated, it's .55, you can do something decent. Now, a redevelopment plan would control what would go there, right? But at the same time, there, there are other things that one would take into consideration while designing in terms of, you know, how are you improving the site? Are you, you know, when you look at Bloomfield Avenue corridor, you want to maintain, nobody wants to put a six-story building there, which has, by the way, happened in other towns. But Verona's governing body, based on my conversations with you guys, you and your colleagues, has been that, okay, you understand that there is a need for revitalizing Bloomfield Avenue corridor, there is a need in a town which is predominantly residential to the need of rateables. We recognize that even when we were writing the master plan. But at the same time, that doesn't mean someone comes in and changes the character of the neighborhood. That message was very loud and clear in all the governing body meetings I attended since December of last year, November, December.
And, you know, just offering my opinion here, I would agree that that's the general direction of the governing body. We've gotten a lot of feedback being concerned about the scale of a lot of, of a lot of development that goes on, particularly on Bloomfield Avenue corridor, and this is us being responsive to it by not, you know, not immediately, not saying yes to very large buildings when these developers do propose them, and we do push back. So-
I, I would agree, and I've had that feedback from you. When I say you, I mean all of you, not just you, Councilman Roman.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor?
Just a couple of things I picked up on when hearing. There was a, regards to the parking lot, that is to the west of this property, the, the property owners who asked for this to be considered for an area of need of redevelopment or paying for the study and so on, did not purchase that property. I think in even talking to them, I don't even know if they tried, but there's issues purchasing that parking lot. There have historically been people who've tried. The, because of, when you actually look at the concept plan for this, the parking would be behind the buildings, the parking would be off of Church Street, and the building would be on Bloomfield Avenue. The, there were like just, there was just enough room for the parking spaces to fit in a building of the size that they're proposing. So even adding more building, they would actually have a parking problem. So I don't think they spent a lot of time looking necessarily at that. So I, I do want to throw in that that's why we're looking at this lot, because they're the ones who asked for it, and they're also the ones paying for the study. The, just some general comments, I lived actually on this property for 10 years in one of the residential units, not the one falling apart that was on the screen. My, my house was really nice, actually. I rented from Verona Aluminum for 10 years. And, and one of the, the big problems with that piece of property is that it has a significant grade right in the middle of it.
It is.
Which makes it very hard to develop on... And very hard to make unified. So the plan that the property owners came in with was to have a building on Bloomfield Avenue, and then I think the parking would actually connect to like the second story, like they had a whole thing like because of the grade, and it made a lot of sense that the way they did it, or even might have been the third story, I can't remember.
You have to realize, none of us have seen anything.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is, it's...
So...
My point being that in a matter like this, looking at this in a vacuum, that property is very difficult to get a really good use out of because of the topography of it. And I think the reason why, and Councilman Roman, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the reasons why I put this forth to be considered was because there was a thoughtful concept for what this could become. And that area of town is very piecemeal in the way it is in there. And that property is really not adding anything to the value of the community. This will certainly add some things there. And presumably with some residential traffic there, it would add to the business development and stuff in that area that would fulfill the goals of our master plan in doing that. So I think it's a... Something worth considering, and I was looking forward to this report on that. But knowing that site very well, I intimately, as a matter of fact, I can say that the conclusions of the report are quite valid, and we'd be hard-pressed to find another solution for this lot.
And I also would like to add, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have been in conversation with the owners, their attorney, and they've been very courteous in terms of heard me out. You know, I expressed my concerns about certain things I would like, and they were very, very forthcoming. But, you know, so that's all I want to say about that.
And the only final thing that I'll add, just to make it more complicated, is that it's really not an oddly shaped lot. It's that it's two lots that are adjacent to one another that the owner owns both. And so it's almost a... I don't want to call it a self-created hardship of the oddly shaped lot.
Where have we seen that before?
Yeah, we saw that once on Arnold's Way. But whatever the case, I, you know, a little bit...
That's why, Jared, the vote is for each lot... I mean, this is an area in need of redevelopment, so you take the lots together as the area in need of redevelopment, but somehow you have to take each lot on their own, which is what Sam did.
Yeah, so examine each lot, but basically the conclusion is that the area... Individually, they meet, but the area together meets the criteria, and this is why.
All right. I think this board has had pretty good opportunities to state their case and to ask questions. Is anybody in further need of any further questions? No?
I don't have any questions. Certainly have statements on the recommendations.
Okay, well, I'm going to actually ask for a motion.
Yeah. But it's sort of voting, I'm ready.
Yes. I'm going to ask if somebody would like to make a motion to find these two properties, 320 Bloomfield Avenue and 11 Church Street, if they meet, that they do meet the criteria D and H to be considered an area in need of redevelopment.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it, the Doc has it.
Okay. Aldiold makes the motion. Mayor Tamboro seconds. Can we please have a roll call vote? And then we will discuss whatever recommendations we would like to send along with this, okay? Fair?
I think you should vote on the... You should add the recommendations prior to vote.
Okay.
So that...
Thank you.
People don't make a recommendation that they're not...
That's why you're the lawyer and I'm not.
Order of operations, very good.
So, say that again?
It's the order of operations here, that's very good.
Yes. Oh, I mean, this is what we have sex for. We need him. So does anybody have recommendations that they would like to send with this vote?
So, yeah, I'll start with this. I thought that my own is, you know... One, I recommend that we write the plan.
Okay.
Okay?
I fully agree with that.
Yeah, that's one, that we ask the governing body to let us handle that with our planner. Yes, with Sam.
And our attorney.
Okay. You know, that covers everything. I personally think we should, you know, make it incentivize the shared parking that we've talked about in our master plan such that whatever plan that we haven't seen can be adjusted for more building and less, you know, unnecessary parking when there's pretty much a lot right there. If they can make a deal with that owner...
More building.
I don't know, more building. Like, less burdened by parking because we apply shared space, and I leave it at that. Reduce impenetrable surface.
All right, so I guess I just...
That's kind of, you know, basin concept.
I mean, it's hard not to, but yeah.
I think we're just looking for, you know, things that are not typical.
Then we write the plan.
Right, exactly.
We write the plan. Come back home.
Okay, so I have your own recommendations? Thank you. Mr. Katsif, do you have any recommendations? I don't know. Doc? David?
I think the planning board should write the plan. I think the issue with one Sunset was because there was a legal agreement on... That was a redevelopment agreement.
That was a very different...
Yeah, that's why the planning board didn't write that, but the planning board should be doing that. That's the planning board's job. So I am fully in support of that because I know the town council, it's not really the town council's role to do that.
So maybe we could have support, and we could have significant input on what the outcome of this would be, which would be great. And we get to work with Sam, and it would be super fun. Okay. Are there any further recommendations that anybody would like to add? If not, and everybody agrees with Mr. Kamudi's... Okay. Can you please call the roll? I already made the motion. The motion was made by Doc, and you still support the motion? You still second the same motion along? Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Katsif?
No.
Mr. Kamudi?
Yes.
Mr. Diold?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Fresky?
Yes.
Chairperson Pearson?
Yes.
The motion passes, and...
Mike?
Is somebody... Wait, are you going to write some sort of...
Kathleen and I rewrite the recommendation.
Okay.
Right.
Resolution?
Rewrite the resolution, actually.
Do we want to pass a resolution at the next meeting? So you're going to help Greg and... Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I'm not doing it anymore.
No, no, no.
That's what I wanted to know, if Greg wanted me to write it or... Perfect. The less work I do, the happier I am.
Okay.
I'll take care of it.
Okay. Oh. Just a quick update for everyone, and then we can adjourn if it's okay. Mr. O'Sullivan didn't make it tonight. I asked him to keep us posted about the municipal stormwater management plan. He did send me an email. $15,000... Sorry. $15,000 were received upfront from the DEP for the municipal stormwater management plan. It is to be used very specifically to hit conditions of our municipal stormwater permit, sweeping, mapping, updates, public education.